Today is Tuesday, October 26th. It's 7:00 PM. I will be, we will be taking public comments on work-related items. Public comment. Time is an opportunity for citizens to comment on gender-related items. Citizens in attendance will be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters to the city council members will not be publicly read. Is there any public that would like to come forward and make any comments? Seeing none. We can start the work session and the item number one is discussion on Commercial Rehabilitation Act as it applies to the Hampton Inn.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn this over to the city manager and our financial director.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good evening. This, this presentation will kind of go over an overview of project incentives, incentives in general, the project benefits, next steps, and have an opportunity to ask questions. With, with us here tonight is Tom, Peter, and Jared from Suburban Inns. So I want to thank them for coming. I don't know if I left someone out, apologize. So we'll get started. I think.
Go down, press the down one.
Down, okay, there we go. So why are incentives needed? I think the, and the short answer of this is that, you know, when a project happens, it needs to maintain a comfortable level of operating income over debt obligations. And this ratio of 1.5 is needed to make, to allure investors to invest in a project. We've used incentives in the past and Ed's mentioned that this requirement of a 1.5 debt service coverage ratio is something that is required when we bond for projects as well. So this is kind of a reason why we need to look at some of these incentives to help make some of these projects happen. I think the next thing I'd like to talk about is some of the other incentives that we've provided in the past for other projects. And I'd like to invite Ed up to talk a little bit about these.
The city of Manistee offering incentives for different projects are nothing new. This list here just kind of gives an idea of what we've done in the past and the different tools that are kind of in the development toolbox. So for payment in lieu of taxes, you know, we've issued them for Manistee Place for no cost. Recently for the Manistee Health and Commission on the redevelopment of the Two Tower and also for the Reed Park. Another tool is obsolete property rehabilitation act or commonly known as OBR. We have one for North Channel, one for Fortanos that are both proceeding ahead. Rent a sun zone. We have one for Reed Riley American Materials. People may not be aware of that, but it's starting to phase out now, but they really haven't paid any taxes since that facility was built because of the rent and sun zone. So that's a huge abatement for that. We've done IFTs, industrial facilities tax abatements in the past for Morton. Currently we have one with Fatlight on their plant expansion. And then more recently we moved Brownfield here on North Channel, the River Park development. These are in Fort River Street and one in the city that the county has with Jocelyn Cove. So these are all tools in the incentive toolbox for economic development. And what's being proposed for the Hampton Inn is a Brownfield and then a new tool, the toolbox that we had a muse before, and Bill will talk about that a little bit.
Thank you, Ed. So as, as Ed mentioned, I think we've done a lot of Brownfield projects. What we're looking at that's new is this Commercial Rehabilitation Act. This is kind of the range of incentives that we're looking at for each of these. Still subject to negotiation with the developer. Just kind of some, some bullet points about the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. It freezes the taxable value of the building and exempts new investment from local taxes. This is for a period up to 10 years. The city must establish a commercial rehabilitation district. Interesting thing about this is land and personal property cannot be abated under this act and are fully taxed. Also, school operating tax, state educational tax are still levied on the new investment. I think Brownfield Redevelopment Act, and this is more Ed's bailiwick, but you have an act that, the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, it sets the rules for brownfields in Michigan. City of Manistee has a Brownfield redevelopment authority. And you have eligible activities under Brownfield and then you can collect that with tax increment financing. You can finance certain aspects of the projects.
The Brownfield redevelopment, what category does this piece of property fall into of those four?
I think functionally obsolete was the, was the item with the old motel. So here's kind of the tax scenarios. One thing we were kind of surprised when we looked at is kind of with it being capped, even though the motel has $195,000 taxable value, the city was only collecting of the almost $11,000, $12,000 with the taxes, only 36, 3,683. So we wanted to kind of show the scenarios with the uncapped land that was purchased. The city collects 13,710 in taxes. Land tax cannot be abated under this Commercial Rehabilitation Act. And then just kind of showing some of these other situations. Without, you know, with, without incentives, you kind of see the blue, which is the city tax. And then you have that gray, which is kind of all the other taxes involved, school, county, state. And then you have that last column, which is kind of showing with, and obviously with the projected fully taxable, I mean, the project may or may not be able to happen with the projected with incentives. You have a capture. School operating is not captured, some of those other ones, the land, as we mentioned. But then you have that area at the bottom where we've combined both the tax that we collect with land and then also a development tip, which is kind of funding infrastructure for repaving that south loop, some of these other items. So there's kind of a net benefit to the city with doing this project with incentives because of that Brownfield TIF. And this is kind of that, we talked about what makes this up. Now, this is still subject to negotiation, but we're looking at kind of different things like adding some parking, redoing the beach loop on the south side, reconnecting, kind of completing this water main loop, storm drain management. So for the area, so these are kind of some of the items that we'll be looking at developing. I think we had some, a mention of adding fencing or a vegetated barrier to protect the playground from kids in the playground from going over to the, to the east road. So these are some of those things that we'll be working on as part of this project. I'm going to turn it over to Ed to talk a little bit about, kind of background about the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority now.
As you might recall, the county was the first to enter the Brownfield Authority. We did a building of that and told the project. Shortly after that, the city decided that we wanted to have a little bit more control of the process. We've come around, brought the authority back in 2006. And it gives us more control over the projects that come to us, you know, I think over the county. We have quite a bit of authority as a Brownfield redevelopment agency, but we can't take out loan or issue any debt. That wouldn't be, be a possibility in this project. That was required. A board and the city residents are personally a little bit interested in property. Actually, about a 500,000 dollar debt that we downsize because of the problem. If we go to the next slide. These are some of the projects that we've done to the city through the Brownfield. There's the River Park, which had expired, but then was put back into place when we did the South Washington Brownfield one. The Jocelyn Cove expired. It was renewed back in '16. And it's basically expired again, but there are discussions and negotiations about extending that for at least that five, six times. American Materials has an active one, but it's currently in the red zone, so it's not doing anything. The Hampton Inn is inactive and it was never captured. Mariah Powers, other business that's inactive. And the two active ones that we have are Free 30 Year River Street, which is set to expire this next year. And the South Washington one, which is a 30-year Brownfield plan, the River and Fortanos. So that's active. So we've done quite a bit and there's been quite a bit of interest. This project will be similar in complexity to what the South Washington one was in terms of where and so on and so on. These are just some before and after pictures of, you know, what, what happened by using some of these tools. Took a bloated vacant building, basically, and turned it into a kind of a destination for the city. So it's a real powerful tool. If you go to the next slide after that, you can see.
I think, I think I took that one out, but yeah.
The River Park building too, obviously set ablaze for a very long time after the crash in 2008. Now it's fully sold out and some of the new, so it's all just a good powerful incentive to be able to get developers to invest in it.
Thank you, Ed. And so kind of next steps with this Commercial Rehabilitation District. This is a new item for us, so we've had to kind of look into it. First step is setting the public hearing. So at the next meeting, we'd have that on the consent agenda to take place on the 16th. We have to put notice in the paper. We also have to note, give notice to the county board of commissioners. They'll need to approve this as well. So following the public hearing on the 16th, the city would then, if it chooses, if the council is agreeable, would establish a Commercial Rehabilitation District by resolution. So we're looking at a three-acre area where the motel is. And then, as I mentioned, this, if passed, then the county has an opportunity to accept or reject the establishment within 28 days of the district. Couple other, then the city approval, then what would happen? The developer would submit a, an application to apply for the abatement. City has 60 days after receipt of the application to either approve or deny it. So I've kind of put these timelines in, knowing the developer's kind of hoping to get this started and, and have this ready for next, next year. So this would be kind of the earliest, would be approval in late, middle of December. And then the state has to approve this as well. So then, you know, after, assuming it passes there, the application passes, we submit to the state tax commission. They certify or deny the application within 60 days. So then you see that February 20th date, 2022. So just wanted to provide kind of perspective. There's a couple of steps in this process, several, many approvals, you know, state, county, couple approvals here at the city as well. The Brownfield, I'll have Ed talk a little bit about those approvals. Similar in timeline, different steps.
So for the Brownfield, the developer was kind of on the case and we pay the record fee. The Brownfield Authority and they reviewed the application and would discuss with the developer some of the recommendations and things that they saw, kind of negotiate items that will be included in the plan, term of the plan, talks of the plan. You know, there's still some discussions we had there with the developer. The BRA would then develop with its consultant, the Brownfield Plan, the Act 381 Work Plan, and the Development and Reimbursement Agreement that meets everybody's needs. City Council would then have to approve the Brownfield Plan and the Development Agreement. And then the state would review that. It would be asking to capture some of the school taxes. So they would have to approve the work plan by Eagle and the capture of the school taxes for the Michigan Strategic Fund in D.C. And once that's all in place, then the TIF capture and reimbursement process can begin over multi-year period. So it's very similar to any other Brownfield plan that we do.
Like what's the impact on that $330,000 cost to the developer? Which way did that fall in?
Okay, so there's, there was discussion with the developer about items that they wanted in the plan. The initial discussion had been the developer was going to pay for some, the city was going to pay for some. They've asked that it can be reimbursed for TIF reimbursement for those now in the latest proposal. So there would be infrastructure that would be reimbursed then through the TIF plan. Then there's an additional 250 to 400,000 dollars of city infrastructure that we want included in this plan. So there are a range of costs and depending on the final negotiations, the length of the potential Commercial Rehabilitation District and total value of consent of the council interest that I, that could change those numbers.
What's the payback timeline once you start getting TIF on that 330,000? How long does it take to get that money back if we did that?
No, that could be paid back just on that. I mean, if it was a million dollars, I think we look at running it out eight, nine years. And a lot of it, Dave, depends on whether the state approves the school capture, first of all, which they probably do. But also what percentage that you're going to capture. Are you going to capture 100% of those taxes? I've modeled where they're capturing 50% of the taxes. We haven't had that discussion with the developer yet directly. There may be a way to capture 50% of the local taxes and 100% of the state taxes. Sometimes the state will approve that if the community shows some efforts. We have to have our Brownfield consulting fish back weighing in on that and kind of see if we can craft that. That would be ideal if we could get for all of the state taxes, but only 50% of the local. So there's some discussion and conversations.
That payback comes out of the money we collect from the project and the TIF doesn't come out of the general fund. So we're not going to be cutting budgets to make, to reimburse them, correct?
The way to think about it is if, if the total taxes are $240,000 for a round number, let's say half of that is the Commercial Rehabilitation taxes now. So now you've got a million dollars or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of taxes. The Brownfield would capture a portion of those taxes. So some of that's still going to get paid out to the local taxing jurisdictions, the city and the state and the schools because of the land value. You know, if there was no Brownfield, that would get paid out. We're going to be capturing some of those with the Brownfield. We want to leave some of them, we don't want to capture necessarily 100% of everything. And because of the fact that this isn't going to go through until after, until next year, the value of the land will already be on the books, so that will be the new base value. So we're going to cap, we're going to collect taxes on those, those aren't subject to capture on the Brownfield Plan. So there's always going to be a portion of the taxes that are going to be higher or pretty much higher than what we're getting today. And then the question is of the, the taxes that are now higher, how much are they going to collect? And that's a discussion with the developer on their financial needs and what the state will approve and how we can craft it. And also what items are in the Brownfield Plan.
And the question people ask when they read about in the paper, they're going to ask me, are my taxes going to go up? And the answer is no. Are we going to have to cut services because we're going to, we could give them a tax break? Are we cutting services? Or are we going to impact the general fund? And the answer has to be no to all those questions in order to make that.
The answer is no to all those questions and actually just the opposite is true. There's going to be a significant net benefit to the city because of this project even with incentives.
I see that, but you'd be able to ask that question.
Absolutely. The other thing that we don't mention on here, but it's important to know, is there's going to be roughly $40,000 a year in water and sewer revenue coming off this project, which is a significant boost to the utility fund. So that actually helps to control our rate increases over time by having that revenue inflow.
So as Ed mentioned, we're looking at additional revenue with, with the water usage there. They're estimating 35 new positions. It does become a regional, I think, destination with that, that, that top floor restaurant. It is, it is changing what was a motel there privately owned. Now it's going to be a privately, you know, it's privately owned Hampton Inn, but it's going to be a destination, I think. The other thing was just some, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for providing some stats. I think their calculations, there's an average person overnight spend, $283. So that's, that's going to go into the local economy. You have kind of these new businesses, downtown delight. That's going to be something, people are going to look to have ice cream, look to go to the restaurants, visit, visit different businesses. So that's kind of another benefit of this project.
Do they have a, something that backs those numbers up? Because those numbers are staggeringly high. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know where they got those numbers from, but 3.8 million to restaurants and 3.1 to transportation is a lot of money. And I wonder how they add those, where do those numbers come from?
I'll invite Mark Miller up to address that.
Councilmember, this is a really, this is a really good question. The, the citation we took that from is from Pure Michigan, the U C numbers, on the average daily spend for visitors in the state. So it's $289 per day according to Pure Michigan. So from that, we extrapolated out of the different numbers based on what the hotel is expecting to bring in at a 60% occupancy rate. And that got us to the $17 million of additional average spend for, for, for visitors. We also took the percentage breakout from Pure Michigan that gave us those, those breakdowns per sector. So restaurants, retail, et cetera, all came from Pure Michigan. And the citation there is from that slide deck that was presented at a tourism conference in 20, based on 2019. Before COVID and so forth. Now, we expect that the air transportation is a little more high. So that number doesn't probably translate as well, but we will see an impact at the, at the airport. And our recreation numbers, golf courses, other recreation, that's probably a little low. So it'll all wash out in the end, but those are the numbers from Pure Michigan.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? And I do appreciate people from Suburban Inns coming in to, to attend tonight, so.
Councilwoman, do you have any other questions, Mr. Lefebvre?
I do have your word.
Aaron, anything? Thank you for the presentation. I think we can move on. Discussion on city parks reservation system. Jeff McCula.
I'm going to bring up an outline. Yeah, please. Thank you, Jeff.
So this is, this concept has been talked about for quite a few years. I think probably Councilwoman, our woman, Paniak, was on the Parks Commission when we talked about it previous time. And then the current Parks Commission has interest in exploring this. The first time that I brought this before the Parks Commission, it was because we had just completed renovation of the Fifth Avenue Beach House. The Lions had just completed all the upgrades they did at the Lions Pavilion. And then we had just constructed the First Street Pavilions. And we started getting probably six to 12 phone calls per year for people who wanted to reserve space, particularly for weddings. And right now, as you're aware, all of our park spaces are first come, first served. There is no reservation system. At the Lions Pavilion, there's a bulletin board where people can post their intentions to be there, but that's not a reservation. And we started talking about it. If you think about a wedding, 50 to 200 people, if they can have a place that, that they could reserve, that's a lot of people coming to Manistee, staying in the hotels. You look at the same numbers that were just presented for the Hampton Inn. They're eating, they're dining, they're buying supplies. So we thought that that would have a lot of economic benefit. The Parks Commission began the discussion this year and Tim O'Connor's here, so Tim, jump right in with me if you want. But Bill put together kind of an outline on some of the things that, that we would like Councils to input on. And number one is, is there interest in doing a reservation system at all? Number two is, if we do, what locations do you think would be appropriate and where? And then should there be a fee charged? Should there be, if there is a fee charge, should it be different for a resident versus a non-resident? And then there's quite a bit of details on how we actually do the reservation. I think that there's probably some processes where we could do that. Do we do it just for weddings? Do we do it for all events? And it really depends on the location. Right now, obviously, we do rentals at the Grand St. Theater and at the Marina, open space above. But those are a lot simpler because there's lock and key. So if somebody pays their fee, if somebody does their, you know, has their insurance requirements or whatever else is required, they get handed a key when they need all these. In the parks system, that's a little bit different because you've got open spaces. And so when we figure out all the details of this, I want to make sure that, you know, Erin's there having a birthday party for her children, but Dave's got a family reunion and he booked it. There, there's also conflicts there and we don't staff the parks 24/7. It's basically 40 hours a week. So, so just wanted to kind of kick off and start those discussions. Tim, did you want to add anything?
Thank you. I just think that this is obviously one of the projects that the Parks Commission is working on and would like to accomplish for 2022. So I think we're one of the few cities, to be honest, that either has beautiful locations, but no reservation system for it. And not, and not the capability of someone to plan a wedding that wants to use and look like the Lions Pavilion. And as Jeff will tell you, there have been conflicts where people have shown up intending to have something, but just have someone else there. It's just, I think the reservation system is going to avoid conflict. It's going to put us where we need to be on the map. It's going to give a lot of people the opportunity to use our facilities. Free of mind, I mean, right now, like Jeff said, to reserve the Lions Pavilion, which is not really reserving, people are just putting a thumbtack with a note on the board saying we wanted to stay. But that doesn't, then they have to go there almost weekly to make sure their note is staying on the, on the board because someone else can easily take it off. And like, I don't know of any other system along the lake shore that uses a system like that. So I just think we need to pretty much get updated. I like the idea of charging that obviously would be up for discussion, whether that be cleanup fees, you know, and that, that be returned, you know, as far as a deposit. Or whether city residents get a certain cost or, I think that needs to be explored a little bit in detail. I think it's a really easy system. We have outlook on our computers already. It's just a matter of establishing who's going to take the phone call, how it's registered in the computer. You want to get a little bit more extreme. I am working with the director of a Parks Commission down in, that has a system set up, like $7,000 a year. You don't have to buy any of that. We're, we already have an outlook system on our computer. So I, I see, I envision putting a sign on the building, very nice little signs saying to reserve the space, please call this number. Eventually maybe a website where people will be able to enter the information on the website or at least either look whether the space is available or not. So it's a good idea. It's progressing, it's going forward. And I, I would like to see us go to that next step.
I just have really one major concern with it. I'm all for the reservation system. My concern is it's an open space, as we've discussed. And when there's an open space, there's no, I don't know how people are going to know that there's an incoming party. They're there, they're hanging out there, they may be having a barbecue. How are the people that are just using it because it's vacant, know that somebody's going to come in? How are we going to have, are we going to have a sign up there? Or is there going to be an electronic board or something that says that at 3 o'clock, there's going to be a wedding and?
Yeah, I know in Mason County, Tom, you can correct me, that they have a sign.
We do, we actually have like a two ply plastic sign, maybe like five feet by 60, for park rangers. And we'll actually put that on an open pavilion like the night before. So I mean, it's the first thing you see when you come in and it literally says, this pavilion is reserved for today. People can still use the restrooms and such, but it is a renewable sign. That would be somebody that in the D W or, you know, that we would have to continually do.
It's very common, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I think also too, that board that's being used now with the thumbtacks, we could be pretty creative with that. And put an updated list on there, you know, whether it be weekly. This, you know, reservation system, have something landed, you know, put it on the board so people can actually check, but just not write on it or do some type of, I, I think the system is rather easy. It's not complex at all, to be quite honest with you. I think we, big steps, you know, we move forward. I'd love to see that put in place for 2022 and then we just, I'm sure we're going to modify it over the years. You know, to be quite honest with you, and maybe other facilities. But I think we're really losing revenue too, that we could be charging people who don't live, don't live in our city. You know, that, that are coming into our area and using our facility. I think we can tap that, you know, and actually start using that for improvements in some of these facilities. Lions Pavilion, fit that, maybe even the van shelf, you know? So I just think we're missing some opportunities and I think the reservation system would bring that all together.
Well, I don't disagree with any of that. I think we have to hit, instruct to the fees so that they cover at least our administrative cost. Not, I don't really see it as a revenue generator, but I think it's a great service. Because I've, I've used the thumb act methodary service. So you don't go back weekly, you go back pretty much daily.
Daily. Yeah. I agree with it.
Could we do something where we could have like a locked box for, like a, we can update it. Once we get a reservation, you open up it, put it in there. And then I know, I'm trying to think back of what we did, we discussed on the commission when I was there. We had thought about just using the actual website, the city website, have a link there. I know, I think that you can do that, Ed.
Yeah, I mean, we can explore that. The system we use for the open space at the Marina is exactly as Tim described it and it works really well. We might start with that and then see how much demand there is and then we could go to some other options. But we have some flexibility.
Okay. And then I had thought about, you know, how the MRA does discounts if you're a part of the city, if you're part of the township, county. If we did something like that as a discounted rate, if you live in the county, if you live in the city. Or then just a whole fee for if you're just visiting, something like that.
Would that be something you'd want the Parks Commission to come up with? Or would you guys? Or would you guys, as a city council, decide on that?
I would think just give it back to the commission and then bring it to us once you figure everything out and ask for approval. I mean, that's basically what you guys are there for, to discuss and then bring to us. I would be okay with that.
I'm sure Mr. Bradford's group can figure out maybe what the fee, the basic fee would be to cover the administrative cost of this.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that. I think there's a little bit of a danger potentially, or at least some difficulty in asking who's a resident, who's not, if you live in the county, do you not?
I agree.
It's a lot of complexity that we don't have at the Marina, open space. Well, I guess we do with city residents and they can check that. But that can be a little bit dicey at times, but, you know, it can be worth it, so.
Well, again, they have a box on that list and just check the box if they're city resident.
For your address or county.
If you're a person, that's great.
Just, yeah.
There's not verification, and I think that's fine. But if you start having to verify it, then it gets a little tougher.
Could the same person, sorry, the same person that reserves the Marina be in charge of reserving the Lion Pavilion?
We can talk about that internally. It may be best done with the Parks Department Secretary, but either way, it can be done. And then there's going to have to be posting. We don't have to worry about that at the open space because we can lock it. We have control of that. With the open pavilion, we don't have control. So it requires the public works with the parks guys to go down and post it and monitor it a little bit better. But that can get worked out.
And for the reservation, couldn't it just be something where they go online and they find an open spot and book it without having to talk to somebody? So you wouldn't have to have anybody manning phones for it?
I honestly like the option of both. Because there are some people who are still not as comfortable doing online options as just making a phone call. So I think you're going to, and to alleviate any issues or problems, I like the option of both, to be quite honest with you. Some people are very savvy on the computer, can do the online portion very easily. Some would just rather make the phone call, is that date available? Can you put me down? And then whether it's sending them the appropriate forms of what the expectations are, you know, granting them that date, which gives them a peace of mind. You know, it would be a piece of paper, just giving them that you got, you're approved, this is your date, this is your time, this is yours, this is the fee, there's one associated with it. And then give them the expectations of that reservation. But I would think both would be probably more appropriate.
And my recommendation would be to start with the phone system. Let's try and try and see what the volume is. Because when you introduce the website and the internet and some of that stuff, you just have another layer of complexity that you have to manage. And that's not to say we wouldn't go there eventually. It's just I think we need to see what the volume's like and see how it works. We require a contract for the open space at the Marina, but they have to come in and fill out. So we need to, you know, that's better done when you talk to somebody rather than necessarily trying to do it online and get it submitted and things like that. So we have a, we have a system that works. It's easy to add other locations to that. There's a few other levels of complexity. I would suggest we consider that. And then we need to research on our website how that would actually look, if there's limitations and that sort of thing. But there is a module that in theory will allow us to do that, but we haven't ever looked at it to research that. So that's maybe step two, in my view, that might make sense. But doing it, or we can do the open space for the Marina is easy. Call this number, and if my staff, if Laura's not there, somebody else can take the call. And so you're always going to get somebody, it's not like, or in the rare instance that you get an answering machine, you know, we call them back. It's a pretty responsive system now, I think, too.
You know, I've worked with Parks and Recreation for a lot of years of my work with the Department of Defense. And we've always had an automated reservation system. So coming here, this was a real surprise. Even more of a surprise, when I became the president of the Lions Club, I got all the calls. And you get 20. I've probably had 200 or 300 calls over the pandemic, especially when there were a lot of demands. And the big issue is, well, I put my card on there and I came down and somebody else was already there and set up. Well, yes, they are, because it's first come, first served. And there's no fair way of applying something that is that arbitrary. Couple of things that I would suggest, at least to start, let's not worry about fees right away. Let's baby step, but have a deposit. Because one of the biggest challenges is how you leave it and how, what your expectation for that facility is when you get it. If you have a deposit, two things happen. Number one, if I shelled out good money for a date, I'm not going to just arbitrarily reserve dates because I think I might need that because I might have company coming on that Saturday on the Fourth of July, so I'm going to reserve it. Well, if you have a deposit that's non-refundable, all right, which is designed to just clean and maintain, then you kind of eliminate people from taking advantage of an open reservation system. Because they've got money in the game. And then secondly, they're going to be a lot more careful about how they leave it if they know that the refund on their money is based on how they're going to leave that facility for the next person. And then we can, you know, kind of judge fees, you know, how much is it really worth? But if you have a deposit set from the start, it helps you kind of keep a better handle on it. And there is expenses.
They're going to use that date. So they're not going to use five to six dates. And they're like, well, I'm not going to use this, I'm just not, yeah. And so that takes away from somebody else that could have used it.
Exactly.
I like the idea. So what would be the next step then?
I think if you want to go back and come up with a plan and then bring it to us.
So the biggest thing then is the baby steps, like we're talking about, is to post a number. Maybe start with the Lions Pavilion. Post a number to reserve this facility, call this number. We establish the outlook system, whatever, to who's going to accept the call and who's going to start doing the reservations. I mean, we can start doing the little steps, little by little.
Yeah, but I would get with Ed, make sure what is capable with the system. And if you can add on to the Marina.
Yeah, you can do that. I think it's more an internal discussion about how to let them get grants, like, that they posted over there so people know. And that's, that's the internal conversation.
I just don't want it to get lost. Because we'll start something and then where are we next year? And, you know, so at least that we can, I know I won't be involved probably in the internal system. I just want to make sure that, is there another date we can meet to see what progress has been made? And we can continue with the, hopefully get it up.
Well, could, Ed, could you give an update at the next park commission?
Yeah, I don't know if we'll be ready by then, but I absolutely, I mean, this won't take long to get out in the morning.
And my suggestion is to do it now because the demand is a whole lot lower. And then you, if there's any bugs, you're going to work them out before now in the springtime, when you're going to see a hike in the demand.
I think it's a matter of buying the glass case they put in there, that you put the lock-in schedule, you know, for updates, for people to take a look at it. And also the phone number on who to call for reservations. And they set up the system on who to call. I think we're halfway there.
A little publicity in the newspaper. I'm sure we might be able to convince somebody into putting a little article together saying, you know, hey, we finally got a reservation system for these parks and.
Like Jeff said, this is the step, you know, that may be next, is Fifth Avenue Beach. And we can talk about that and then the Van Shell. At least we're going to start getting the process going. I think it's going to develop into something that's going to be very beneficial for the city.
If it's not reserved, is it still available, first come, first served? It's kind of going to be kind of a flag, you know, you're going to want it. You will hold it if it's not reserved?
No, I wouldn't think.
No, if it's not reserved, it's okay. Is that what you're asking, to get it open to everybody? It's just, it's just a matter of that, I mean, my son got married up here. You know, it was nerve wracking to know what would be at it. You know, even though we put our note on there. And it's like, and after going through that, I'm like, no way. You know, this is too much. And literally, my wife had me going to the Lions Pavilion almost daily, you know, to make sure her note was still up there. And I'm like, there's got to be a better way. You know, so I hadn't personally been involved in it. And you got to admit, Lions Pavilion is a beautiful spot. And I think once people have that satisfaction of knowing they have it for sure, and like Bill said, it's going to bring in a lot more as far as activities. And that would produce a lot from the city and city, so I'm looking forward to that.
And there's even some additional things that we can discuss because we actually have covers that can close off those windows on the outside. And there was a plan for partition doors even, to get more use out of the facility.
Preferred vendors, you know, that have worked with it, being able to, you know, give even the people that are coming to use them, list of vendors that are preferred that maybe they could use, you know, that have been established in the city. I just think, I see a huge benefit from it, so.
Can we put them on a work session, maybe in January or February?
And I think it is kind of like with that initial policy, I think, of recommendation, because there are some questions to answer. How long can someone run out of spot? I mean, are we going to let people just take up a day? Are we still going to keep areas open just for open enjoyment of the park and the pavilions? So there's some very fundamental questions. I think the Parks Commission should bring a recommendation back. So there's some questions to answer first. But, yeah, I think the pilot idea, that's kind of, so once those fundamental questions are answered, I think the Parks Commission comes back, makes a recommendation to council. You guys are able to look it over, provide input. And then that pilot is kind of kicked off in the spring, is my, is my idea of it.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we proceed, did we resolve the issue with the brownfield? Did we give the city mayor enough information to see proceed or not proceed with that project? I don't really know that we finished that discussion, did we? Are you satisfied? Do you know what we're having with that?
So my plan is to bring out the November 3rd agenda. I mean, on the consent agenda is going to be to set the public hearing for the 16th of November. We're going to publish a notice saying that there's a public hearing and then have also that resolution to establish a district at the meeting on the 16th. So have anyone had any questions for suburban in?
We're still here.
You can go right at the apple, you've got questions. They came up in case there was any concerns.
I'm going to quickly think of a question. We appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you. It's just purely just timing, just, you know, because of all of the downloads that have fallen and the delays, we really want to hit the spring construction season. So I mean, because the project's going to be a 14-month project, so. Time is kind of the essence. You wouldn't think so, but you layer the states, time that they take, that really slows down progress. It's not us, it's out of our control. We appreciate your support.
Do you actually have demo plan set at this point?
So we have bids, but.
Come on up, Peter. Thank you.
So part of the Brownfield plan is covered through the demo. There's some light painting, asbestos issues with the building. So once everything's approved, then demolition will start, yes. The other thing is too, is that we're up against, as we kind of alluded to, but to be very frank with everybody, is because of COVID, hotel values are in the toilet and construction costs that are at all-time skyrocketing, ready. And so there's a massive delta that are going like this that we're trying to make happen as well. So a lot of moving parts and pieces, but, you know, we're excited about the project and just trying to make everything kind of come together as fast as we can so we can hit the spring. You know, we're not going to beat the lake, so there's no sense in trying to do wetter conditions and all that stuff, because mother nature will win all day long, so.
For the record, may I, we have your name.
Oh, Peter, you go on.
Okay. I thought you might be, but I thought it would be important to ask. Thank you very much.
And I do have Jared and Tom with me to give you the other question. Jared's the Brownfield tax expert. I don't know what your official title is, Jared, but he's done more of this work than we could ever dream of. And then Tom Wiley, who is our head of construction and facilities. And so Tom is very intimate with projects. And then Chris Beckering is with Pioneer Construction, who's helping us as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The other question?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I asked him to put on a discussion on the housing summit update because I took part in the three-day seminar that ran about seven or eight hours a day for three days. I thought it would be nice to share some of that information with the council members during the work session. So I'm going to read some of my notes. So I'm going to, just so you know that I'm reading from a script that I wrote, so I wouldn't miss anything. I signed up for the Seventh Annual Northwest Michigan Summit to hear what the experts had to say on housing. I'm certainly not unaware of our housing shortages, particularly for anyone seeking to buy a house under $150,000 in Massey County. Also extremely aware of the shortages in rental units, particularly around the city that are affordable or livable. The Northwest Housing North Summit covers the following 10 counties, Emmett, Charlevois, Antrim, Leland, Benzie, Grand Travers, Calcasca, Massey, Wexford, and Mesaki. This was a three-day remote event that ran for approximately seven to eight hours with a different content in each session. Thankfully, all sessions were recorded, are available to the participants for at least the next month or longer. I believe they're shareable, so there might be an opportunity for me to shoot them out with a link to everybody on council. We, as a committee, are not immune or cavalier or insensitive to these issues. What holds us back from grabbing any project offered is the uncertainty of whether it is a right fit. I was hoping to find out what other communities have done to address the same issues we have here. I wasn't disappointed. The first two projects the participants were introduced to was a video produced by Boardman Review, which is a print and digital magazine featuring stories about northern Michigan, highlighting nonprofits and entrepreneurs, creative types and outdoor enthusiasts. Two companies, Cherry Republic and Preston Feather, each saw a critical need to provide housing. Cherry Republic makes food and drink consumables out of cherries. They have quite a few outlets that sell products, and the workers and the salespeople need housing. Cherry Republic started buying housing, fixing them up as rentals for their seasonal part-time help and full-time staff. Preston Feather sells building materials. They too saw an opportunity to do the same, provide housing for their employees at a reasonable cost. These companies went out and did it on their own. I think they got some tax incentives, but mainly they took the initiative to see a problem and try to address it. These companies have given us a clever look at doing something smart, timely, and creative. They did this entirely on their own. Michigan M E D C did provide some funding to help it happen. Trying to figure out what the best solutions through M S H D and M E D C can be confusing as each have a bunch of different programs to offer. We have a large segment of our population that falls into the ALIS category. I'm sure you've all heard of this. The acronym stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed. This is not Section 8 housing. Typical examples of workers include cashiers, clerical help, store employees, restaurant staff, hospital workers. A family of four with two wage earners may make $64,000 annually and still have difficulty making ends meet. A few years ago, a typical family in this category is one paycheck away from a catastrophe. Their biggest expense at that time was food. That now has changed. Their biggest expense is now childcare. There is another development that I want to talk about. It's called the creamery. It's a brand-new, energy-efficient, they're using green technology, 48-unit apartment complex that includes on the first floor of the building, 24/7 daycare center. It is a project in Kalamazoo. What would it be like to be a single parent with a couple of kids? You drop off on-site to a daycare center in your housing complex. It's obviously a desirable option. We have not thought of that. We haven't had a developer approach us on that. Interestingly enough, this is a Hollander project. There is another example to look at in regards to homeownership that is affordable. It is in Grand Haven. And it started out as a result of an ordinance change. It's called the Robinson Landing. And what they did is they, the city owned some property. It was about 7.58 acres. And they decided that they would provide housing there. So they went about, first they had to change their ordinance. They had to change the lot size, they had to change the size of the square footage of the homes. And they were able to get, they were able to get 30 homes on, under the property. So their intent in doing that is that half of them would be advertised for sale to households that earned between 60 and 80% of the area median income. Now, what's different about it is the city maintains ownership of the land. So for those homes, they're going to, there's a 99-year lease on the property. So for those homes, they're going to, there's a 99-year lease on the property, and they're just paying for the house. If they went to sell the house, then at some point, when it appreciates, then that difference in the cost that they paid for the home and what they owed on it would be split between their, they have a, a community bank, which is very helpful, because that helped fund this project. The other half of the housing development, because there were, there's 30 homes in total, are going at market rate. So it's been a collaborative effort, and what I thought was really interesting, I'm sorry the terrain's not here, but they pitched this idea out to different real estate groups, and one real estate company came back to them and said, we'll do it for 2% commission, one for the selling side, one for the buyer's side, because we want to give back to the community, so that also help lower the cost of the price of the home for everybody involved, which was pretty nice. They're expected to open this spring. I really like the idea of the land bank idea, the land bank, and I think it's just another option that we ought to explore. But it did come with changing some zoning in different parts of their city, as far as looking creatively at different land parcels that they could use to reduce the lot size so they could have more lots, and, you know, of course, reduce square footage in the homes. And they're all brand-new, they're all energy efficient. So we could possibly add housing if we could figure out where to put it. So it's just another option in the toolbox. It was a great, it was hard sitting in from the computer for three days to absorb all this, but it was a good experience. I'm sorry there weren't more people that were able to join. I know several of you work, so it's hard to devote that kind of time to it, but like I said, if I can share those documents or those links out to you, I'll do it. So if you guys have any questions, let me know. Something to think about. I may have failed to mention that it did occur to me when I was going through this that, wouldn't it be something if we could, we could get four or five major companies in Manasty County to figure out how they would fund a 24/7 daycare center and then figure out the development part on top? Just thought. That's all I have. Anybody want to talk about anything else under other? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Yes, we adjourn.